Terry just took my entire speech. Thank you. I just want to remind everyone, there are three seats available for city council at large. So you don't have to feel like you can only choose one. We have a broad candidate base that has diversity and culture and a rich history. I am not from Fort Wayne. My great-great-grandmother was Cherokee. I'm from North Carolina originally. I am ashamed to tell you today, I have no clue about her history and I have not looked into it. I have been so busy in survival mode. My, my, uh, my family, my family history is rich. I know my mother is from Wales and Scotland and we're Welsh, but I am ashamed to tell you, I don't know much about my Cherokee heritage, only that I can claim it if I need to or if I want to and get some kind of special preferences, which I've not applied for. I wrote a specific answer to your question and I wanted to make sure that I presented this exactly the way I intended. So if you please excuse me, I'd like to read my response. "I feel Fort Wayne's identity is already in place, but several entities, the Native Americans of Fort Wayne in particular, are not being acknowledged as well as they could be. I have not personally seen many festivals where Native American population of Fort Wayne has had a significant presence in a concerted effort to educate us on their history, craft, and heritage, and I for one would like to see more of that. I feel they have much to teach us and children would enjoy the experience of learning their craft, past way of life, value, and historic significance to Fort Wayne. Regarding the African-American culture of Fort Wayne, I feel our community is rich with opportunity for anyone interested in learning and actively experiencing many sectors of the African-American culture, including but not limited to cultural dance, African artisans, spoken word, literature, and of course, the history. I am not familiar with the specific history of the African-American origins as they relate to the city of Fort Wayne, but would embrace that opportunity joyfully. Your efforts are helpful in learning more about history, Eric. I would not want to look in the rearview mirror as a divisive look into history that could be cast as an exclusive blame game for current leadership, but I would embrace it as a foundation for building a community more appreciative of the struggles of all cultural sectors and who had a hand in modeling our city. I would love to see the Native American community take an active role as the African-American community has in putting forth a more assertive effort to claim their stake and educate us all in their rich history. Perhaps PBS 39 could help produce a documentary that helps educate us all in the facets of that history. I would encourage the Native Americans to ask for that to be accomplished and possibly to accompany PBS 39's recent documentary, Fort Wayne Lost But Not Forgotten, as a companion to that documentary." I, I have always been welcomed here. I have not yet once met a stranger. I have not had the unfortunate, um, experience of being, uh, uh...
Ostracized.
Thank you. Ostracized by any particular culture and nor do I do that to anyone else. Everyone here is my neighbor and like Terry said when he took my speech, um, I chose to, I chose the ballot position of candidate at large because we all are, I feel, one. And in leadership, as far as city council goes and as what we can actually do as a city council, it is Indiana state code that we are, our job is to enhance the lives of our community and that is my intention when I serve. Thank you.
Let me just say this, Eric, as you know, for, we've talked about this as well. The last twenty-seven years now, I've been the director of the Headwaters Park project and that's, that's kind of an ongoing project if we continue to make some improvements and additions, even though the park has been open for several years. But one of the things that we did when we were designing the park back in the 1990 was, was to preserve the area and the sculpture around Little Turtle. There was, there was some interest in moving the statue back twenty, twenty-five years ago, but one of the things that we wanted to do to honor Little Turtle and his legacy is to keep the sculpture there, build the park around him, and accentuate him as he stands and looks across the Three Rivers and towards the Confluence. I think that's important, that we continue to preserve our history and our heritage and I think it's important that we look forward to doing additional things in our community. We always have to recognize the sins of the past, if you will, but we look forward to better relations in the community in years to come. And I'd just like to point out one thing. I did a little genealogy research recently and I have a, a great-great uncle on my father's side, my grandmother's side of the, my, actually my dad's grandmother, my great-uncle was Isaac P. Gray, who was the governor of the state of Indiana from 1880 to 1884. And we, when he was a state senator in the late 1860s, he led the drive to ratify the 15th amendment to the constitution that gave former slaves the right to vote. So that kind of spirit is kind of instilled in me as I go forward and will do everything I can, not only to improve relations here in the city, but to do things that will make this city more inclusive, bringing in more opportunities and jobs and commitment to education.
Tom, please.
Eric, thanks. You know, I mean, my, my whole philosophy between, you know, the African-American community, Glenn Hines and I have had a lot of talks in regards to this. My mother and my father, they brought us up in, in the aspects of how you are to treat them, you know, treat them whatever ethnic color, you know, black, white, whatever. We're, we're all taught that we're all human and we're all, you know, I mean, close your eyes and if you shook a person's hand, you wouldn't know whether they were black or white or Mexican or Chinese or whatever, or Mese. That, that isn't, that isn't what is important. My parents instilled in me that it's not the color of your skin, it's the heart of the person. And I've always felt, and I appreciate what you said Pastor, in the aspects of, you know, I've always looked at, at the philosophy in life as God first, family second, and your job third, and if you follow that type of, of family value with God being first, you know, you're always, you're always going to come out on top because in the end, this is a short life we live and, you know, what we do down here, to me, is all for the honor and glory of God. So I mean, from, from what, you know, to get into political aspects of what you're trying to get involved with, with Chief Little Turtle, John Miseng and I have spent countless hours at his house over on Lawton Place, where the actual memorial is, which most people, I don't think, even realize that that's where Chief Little Turtle's, you know, the rock is there with the imprint and the logo and that, and I've tried to do the little things that you could possibly do to, to take care of the memorial in itself. But I, I agree with you, it probably needs to be in a little bit more prominent place than where it's at because most people don't even know that it's even there. And Chief Little Turtle was an important part of the American history of Indiana especially and I think it's, I think it's a really important thing. My one last comment on, in regards to this, you know, I know you had talked about General Anthony Wayne in our interview that we had last week and Chief Little Turtle, and I, I personally liked what you had to say, but I can tell you, when, when the mayor wanted to move the Anthony Wayne statue, I thought the whole city was going to go into an uproar because of wanting to move that particular statue. But I, I liked your idea of making him, making Chief Little Turtle a more prominent figure in the community. My last comment is this, we can learn from the past, you know, I look forward to the future and I'm, I'm living in the now because the only day I have is today. That's all God's given me. Tomorrow, I might not be here. So from that vantage point, I look, I look to help the community as a whole, like I've done over the last 11 years, as I actually personally have done all my life because I believe in life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. That's pretty much it. Thank you for your time.
Bryce Traffer.
My name is Tom Bryce Traffer, running for city council at large, Republican. You know, I grew up in a family a lot like Tom Didier. My dad always said, you know, do unto others as you would want others to do unto you. I consider myself a common person. I was never given anything. I didn't come from a wealthy family. You know, I come from a blue collar family. You know, I played for Notre Dame, like I said before, only, only because I got a four-year scholarship, I couldn't afford that. Went on to got a master's degree in education, tried to give back to people. And history is big. I taught world history, I taught US history. Never realized how much I didn't know until I started teaching it. But, you know, it's, it's, it's good that we have Eric to remind us that we do have a history in Fort Wayne of Native Americans and Black Americans. You know, you, I, I think when I read about the history of Fort Wayne, they said Wayne built that fort in 1974, I believe it was.
Seventeen ninety-four.
Or seventeen ninety-four, I got that backwards. Seventeen ninety-four.
They've heard the numbers there, Tom. You're the Notre Dame grad, I mean.
Anyway, La Salle, the French were the first to come in there before the Battle of Saint Clair. Actually, that was the Battle of the Wabash, you know, and the French came in and blacks were in Fort Wayne thirty years before the fort was ever built. You know, one of Eric's questions is how, how can you be inclusive about what you're doing today if we were exclusive with, with the people that built Fort Wayne? You know, and, and I try to, I try to look at everybody on an equal basis, I try to treat everybody on an equal basis. If there's a pendulum at city council at large, and I really mean this, if, if the sixth district is lower on that pendulum or on that weight scale than one of your other districts, something's wrong. You know, that sixth district or any district in town should be equal as far as the funds, the legacy funds, the grants and so on. And I'd like to represent all Fort Wayne because Fort Wayne is, is a, it's, you know, it's, it's the homogeneity of those six districts. Thank you.
Terry.
Yes, sir. I think this question of history is extremely important. Before the 1600s, when European white traders and settlers began to come to Fort Wayne, there was a thriving Native American Indian population, predominantly Miami Nation, also Algonquin and, and other tribes and, and nations. That began to change with the coming of Europeans to this area, to Kihiyanga. And I think we need to be very aware of that history. There certainly was a period of conflict racially in, in terms of European settlers and soldiers versus Native Americans, later in the way that we dealt with one another as African-Americans, white Americans. And the reason that I think this historical question is important and that I appreciate Eric raising it is because it speaks to the very question that we have still today. How are we going to think about one another? How are we going to treat each other? Do we treat each other out of a sense of fear, out of a sense of anger, out of a sense of not knowing and understanding one another, being frightened of our diversity and our differences? Or do we get to know one another as human beings, as people? Do we respect those differences in racial traditions, in cultural traditions, and blend those things together with respect for one another's traditions? Or do we take a step back and fear? And the problem with taking that step back and fear is that we then begin to treat each other differently and mistreat each other differently. We begin to withhold economic resources, we begin to pass laws that are discriminatory and are attacking of other people, and so we need to be in one another's lives. You know, I've heard a number of people say today, and there's a piece of me that agrees with this, is that we, we don't want to be stuck in the past, we want to move into the future. I absolutely agree with that. But if you walk around the city of Fort Wayne, if you knock on doors and visit with people, you still see racism in this community. You still see people being treated differently in this community. You still see attitudes of hatred based upon race, based upon culture, based upon ethnic groups, based upon sexual preference and, and identification. We need to get beyond that. We need to treat one another as, as the, the strong people that we are. I, I could go on and on about this. I, I'm very, I, I have deep, deep feelings about this. But, but let me conclude by saying, when I was asked to, to run for city council, I was asked whether I wanted to run for a district position or at large. And for me, that wasn't even a question. I'm a Fort Wayne guy and, and I'm somebody for all of Fort Wayne. You know, as I told you a little earlier, I grew up in this part of town. I near, now live on the near north side, but it bothers me sometimes when we talk about southeast Fort Wayne, northwest Fort Wayne, northeast, southeast Fort Wayne, as if these were different cities. We are all one community and we need to know one another, we need to respect one another, we need to work together to make this a better place for all of us.
Joe.
My name is Joe Renner. I'm the Republican candidate for city council District Six. The, the history of Fort Wayne does show a lot of divisiveness. Indiana altogether, that divisiveness, that divisiveness was originally targeting the races, American Indians, African-Americans. What I see now is that divisiveness happening between the classes, you know, the rich versus the poor. I see Indiana legislature passing laws that could be considered discriminatory. That, that has no place in my, in the modern day, no place at all. Everybody needs to have an equal voice. Money should not equal a vote and sadly, that's what it's become. Those who are funded, those who are funded are the ones who get elected. And it's a sad state, but we need to elect people that are servants and not servants of those who pay the most.
Michelle.
I'm Michelle Hill. I'm running for the second district, city council. And I would have to say that with that issue, it is, it is a shame that there was that exclus- that exclusivity and it is important that we now become inclusive. I found a article in my research that in 2006, Bluffton, Indiana became a part of a partnership for an exclusivity. And the other two that they stated for Indiana were Indianapolis and Gary. And I think it would be good for Fort Wayne to also join that group and add into that conversation of becoming inclusive rather than exclusive.
Michelle.
Michelle Chambers, city council at large, Democrat. One of the primary reasons why I'm running for office, I'm in people's homes every day and I'm listening to people talk and folks feel very disconnected to the city. I don't have to go as far back as when we, when Fort Wayne started as a city. I mean, Fort Wayne was very divided in the seventies when I was a little girl. So I've lived the divide here, but what I've experienced is the growth and the inclus- exclusiveness, inclusiveness of everyone here in the city. So we don't have to go back a hundred years, we can stay right now. The city is divided, it's working towards coming together. We are here, African-Americans, Burmese, Latino, Asian, white, and we're going to be here. So we have to have a city council that is reflective of the city and it does not reflect the city right now. And we need a change and I'm that change.
Bob Boyford, I understand that you said that you are from Detroit and not to bring up any more history, but back in 1780, it was said that Gerald Obama had a conversation with George Washington and Obama said that he was on his way to attack Detroit, the British. And George Washington said, hey, that's cool, blowing away, stop by and take care of the Indians, kill the Indians in, in Kihiyanga. So Fort Wayne's history and Detroit's history, it's, it's pretty linked, but please, I respond to the question.
I've been listening. I didn't have prior knowledge of how this was going to flow, but I've experienced discrimination in Detroit and in Fort Wayne. And I'm past the point of just talking about it. I really want to know what we're going to do about it, you know? It seems like that's a subject that we just can't broach. It does seem like that's something that, that for some reason, it's just going to go away. I was there in Detroit in 1943 when the riots broke out. I was there in 67 when they burned the city down. Detroit today has not recovered from the riots of 67. You cannot get a motel in Detroit, you cannot sit down at a nice restaurant, you cannot go to a grocery store in Detroit, you got to go to the suburbs. I came to Fort Wayne, my wife and I, we tried to get a room on Buchanan Street. The lady told us, I'm sorry, we don't rent to darkies. And we didn't dare go on Brutusville. But my whole point is, that never made me bitter. I thank God it never made me bitter. I thank God also that he used me at International Harvester and the Dana Corporation to enlighten a lot of my white brothers that didn't really understand our culture or why we do things or we don't do things. The names sometimes that are offensive to us, and I thank God he used me in that way. But I'd like to see us get to a point where we start having forums on, on solving problems.
Okay, but Bob, since we have not had a chance to talk, when you, what do you think about the premise that, that we have to discuss and understand what happened in the past in order to get past it? I mean, if we never...
I understand that.
And that's, that's, this is the whole crux of what we're doing here, is to understand it, so once we have an equal understanding, then we can move on because we're not moving on based on ignorance.
Yeah. I think, I think another thing, the wife and I were Fort Wayne Community Schools for 11 years. And the one thing that I think the school system can do, instead of having just February for a Black History Month, they should have a month for every nationality so kids can learn about it. There's no young people here right now. They don't know what we're talking about. So in the school system, you have a captive audience. I think that would help tremendously.
Okay.
I come from a family that, my brother-in-law is American, and if you looked at him, some people would say he's African-American and he hates that designation. He hates that designation with a passion because in his mind, he's American. He was born in Georgia, raised in Georgia, came up here, and he's as American as everybody in this room. And you know what? God bless him, he's absolutely right. This whole, this whole divide that, it seems like sometimes we're bringing it on ourselves. My brother-in-law is an amazing man. He served two tours in Iraq beside my father. He married my sister, they have a beautiful child, my nephew, who was born the year that Barack Obama won the presidency. And I was so happy, not for Barack Obama winning, but that my nephew was going to grow up in a time when that was a possibility. He was not going to know a time when that wasn't possible. And we want to talk about, you know, the past and the present. You know, the past cannot be changed. The future is whatever we want to make of it. And I see my brother and I think my brother, my brother-in-law is a really good example of that. You're right, Eric, there has been a divide historically. What has happened to the Native Americans, what has happened to people of different colors is a, is a travesty. My, my husband, who's there taking pictures, his family has Native American in him. He comes from a Native American bloodline. And so I get to go to powwows in the area and we don't have any powwows in Fort Wayne. Well, not as many as we, we should have. And the one really interesting thing about powwows, if you've never been to one, you know, they have these beautiful ornate headdresses and if a feather gets lost off of a headdress, the whole thing shuts down. The whole thing shuts down. And it doesn't matter if the feather is like a gigantic eagle feather or just a teeny tiny little feather, because the size of the feather doesn't, doesn't make the person. It's the content of their character, the content of their heart that makes the character. At the end of the day, we all bleed red. At the end of the day, we all have the same needs, the same desires. We all want better schools, we all want better communities. And again, the past can't be changed, but the future is exactly what we make of it. Thank you.
I'm Matthew Sore, running for fourth district. And when it comes to segregation and stuff like that, it's like, I went to Homestead, a predominantly white school, mostly affluent, but in the morning or between classes, you would notice a distinct divide between the white students and the black students because it's like all the black students would congregate in the exact same area of, they were basically all good friends with each other. And it's like, I always thought that was very strange and it's like, now that I realize it's because there's a distinct cultural difference between different ethnic groups just because of family histories and whatnot. And those are the things we've got to work beyond to more, so we can relate to other people in a more personal level. Because we shouldn't be isolating, because it's like we're subconsciously isolating ourselves in the little, little balls that it's like, we need little boxes. We need to go beyond that because it's like, when I deal, it's like, I own a few rental properties and it's like, I don't care. It's like, when it comes to looking for somebody to rent, it's like, I know it's, you can't legally discriminate, but I don't really care what race or ethnicity they are. It's called, do they have a job? Can they pay the rent? Are they going to likely stiff me or not? And it's like, it comes down to personal character more than anything, so it's like, even, it's like, even the person who's being discriminated against, it's like, it's hard to change the person doing the discrimination. It's like, you can create laws for that, but the chances of that, fixing that person are very slim, but you can always work to improve yourself, to make yourself look good. It's like, I'm not saying there's anything wrong with, it's like, there is nothing wrong with the individual person, but it's like, when you go up and for a job interview, you want to be the person with the best qualifications to win that job, whether it's education or whatnot.
Okay.
Yeah, folks, my name's Dan Lobdell and I'm running for city council at large, like several people here at the tables. I just did a quick timeline here as far as, I've lived this city. I was born in 1954. I went to high school at Elmhurst in 1971 when there was busing for the first time. Remember that, Tom? Oh, yeah, that, that era? 1971. You know, up to that time, I had never gone to school with a black kid. I have to admit, they were kind of better athletes. I thought I was a pretty good athlete until I went to school with a, a, a black kid. They could, you know, but I had, I had white man jumping syndrome when it came to basketball. White men can't jump. But yeah, the landmark that stands out, knowing that we are making progress, and I, and I reflect over my 60 years of existence in this town, you know, being away and then coming back, being away and coming back, comparing this town to this town, is inclusiveness biblically is, is not, is not a guarantee. You know what I'm saying? We as men can basically try to make everybody included, but even in families, think of family members, sometimes they're not included during holidays. Same goes with society. I remember in 1967, some of the attitudes of my, my parents were all for busing, you know? They thought it would add to my overall spectrum of learning, you know, inclusiveness. And it did. I learned, I got some real good black friends. Eric being one that I went to high school with, the south side, my senior year. You know, it was all-inclusive in the sense that, you know, blacks and whites, even though it didn't make sense to a lot of black families because they were being bused from, you know, let's say here on Creighton and Han all the way out to Northrop, you know, something crazy like that, or the Elmhurst High School where I started out, high school. So I remember those days, but I think it was good in the whole. At first, like anything else, it was a rocky start. People didn't like it. Blacks didn't like it, whites didn't like it. But as we grew, and here it is, close to 45 years later, it's, 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 it's like this Obama healthcare that we're talking about. Thirty years from now, it'd be like Medicare, you know? Unless the Republicans repeal it. But 1950- But, uh, nineteen fifties, business was booming. You had Harvester, you had Zoner where I worked, you had Essex Wire, you had Phelps Dodge, you had all these places. Black people were coming up from the south for opportunity. Black people were coming from Detroit for opportunity. You know, it wasn't Detroit, they didn't have the riots here in Fort Wayne. People were coming from Chicago, like my dad, because he didn't like Chicago, it was too big, too hustling, too bustling, you know? It was a, you know? But now it's kind of turning into here in the nineteen, I mean, two thousand and fifteen into a, what I call a little, uh, a little Chicago. Our crime rates horrendous. One senseless murder is too many. I think these gang units are a good thing when it comes to some of these guys. I hate to point it out, southeast sides where the statistics are, where all these, uh, majority of these, uh, crimes are being committed as far as, uh, murders. Uh, one of those is, is senseless to me. So, uh, it goes to nineteen sixties when I was influenced by JFK and Martin Luther King, okay? Those two guys, okay, I'll wrap it up. Martin Luther King Bridge, go down there, check it out, read all the slogans and signs, okay? That's equality for all of us and that's what we're all striving for ideally. I, I guess I'm still an idealist. With that, I'll, I'll pass. Thanks, Eric.
You know, we don't teach our history to our kids. I think that's why we repeat sometimes. Because if we're, if we're not aware, aware of our history, then we're not aware of our failures. I've been truly blessed. I've, I've had positive people in my life. My, um, family came here from, uh, West Virginia, by way of Virginia, by way of a boat from West Africa. Um, we know our history, our family history. We got here in sixteen fifty-four. Uh, we know, knew of the slave owners. My family instilled in us who we wa- who we are, who we should be, who we should grow to be. My, uh, great-grandfather, uh, was a minister. He hired Dr. Martin Luther King as an associate pastor, First Baptist Church in Charleston, West Virginia. Vernon Johns, uh, basically the father of the civil rights movement, uh, would come to the family house, seven-bedroom house, uh, and have dinner and discuss the issues of the time. I've been in, quote, civil unrest areas. I was in Watts in sixty-five. I was in, in Detroit in sixty-seven. I was in Los Angeles in ninety-two. As I said, listening to everybody, it kind of let me know how old I am. Yeah, if I can remember all these things. I remember the busing back in seventy-one and the bu- and the, the concerns that people had that we weren't homogenized. As a community, we have to move forward. We have to understand our differences. We have to accept our differences. Because really, the only thing that's different about us are our tradition and our cultures. Other than that, we're, we're the same.